Except for the department report, before we start that, all the committee informants will be the same for 2015 to 2014. All the chairs will stay the same. Make it easier in this transition right here. Let's see. Move into department reports, starting with C.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the Department Report, covering the month of November. Some of the highlights from your report have started yet is we had sixty-five inspections. Those are picking up. All superments are picking up. We wrote thirty-nine in that month, collected forty-eight hundred twenty-six dollars in revenue. We had seven new businesses apply for business license in that month and four closed. One of the closings was actually just a change of ownership. Major projects we have ongoing are still the same as last report, the medical office building at the hospital, the Dollar General on Spring Street, and Change Room Check at Paradise Shops in Monroe. That should be opening, I think, within the next week or two. The City Marshal, one hundred twenty-six times from the roadway, wrote forty-two repair cleanup orders, issued two citations, and also attended eight hours of training. The Stock Preservation Commission issued two COAs, as you said, there, and the Planning Commission met at work sessions since we don't have any talks or discussions in the month of November. If you have any questions, I'll be there.
Which business did you say was going to be opening in a couple of weeks?
Change Room Check.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any questions for Patrick? Okay. Thank you, Patrick. Telecommunications.
Thank you, Mayor. This month's media bill was a little over nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars for about twelve million, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, varying twenty-seven kilowatt-hours. And for last month, Mr. Little, you'd asked about the breakout of that bill. I met with Paul Werfel today. Between sixty-eight and seventy-two percent of our bill is fixed. So if you can think of each month, you're looking at approximately seventy percent of that bill is fixed. And by fixed, I mean those owning operation maintenance of plants, that's debt service, that's transmission, stuff on the transmission lines that we have to repair yearly. Things like that are building to that. What are not fixed are fuel costs. Fuel costs fluctuate month to month. Nuclear being the most stable, coal being up is pretty much the highest right now with natural gas being coming in at second. But that's basically how that bill breaks out. I haven't found a good way to break that out and lay that in your report every month, but Paul's going to get with their finance people and they're going to help me. In our bill, they'll have a good little breakout for you. If you're dealing like that, we'll adjust it and make it where you like it. Telecommunications. We had a top user of nine hundred and twenty-four gigs. Still, we're still beating them down, trying to get them back into the agreement. We are still rewriting the agreement or our terms of use, trying to figure out a happy medium between what the customers are paying for and people abusing the system. Three hundred and eight above two hundred. We are leaning toward about a five-hundred-gig usage for the month, and there's ten percent of our customers that are over that five-hundred gig. And most of that ten percent are well over that five-hundred gig. So I think that's probably going to be the number we come in at is that five-hundred gig. We are transitioning to Z Coram as our provisioning company and not, we're getting away from our old company. One reason is Z Coram will allow us to create a bill to that customer. Instead of just cutting that customer off, yeah, if you want to use more than the five-hundred gig, we'll start running a meter after that five-hundred gig and generate a bill. So you can still use it. You can still do what you want to above that five-hundred gig, but you're going to pay extra for it. And we'll bring that up, that to you before that's passed on to the customer. But just to let you know, out of three thousand customers, there's thirty, we have thirty, thirty-five customers that are abusing the system. Now, I've got customers, I've got employees and other customers that I know that use three, four-hundred gig a month and they watch Netflix, or somebody's at home watching Netflix, or Hulu, or Vudu, watch streaming service all day long. And I don't know what these other customers are doing. Some of them, I think, are reselling the service. We can't prove that yet, but we're still looking. I think some of these places are in apartment complexes or in townhomes, and I think they're opening up a Wi-Fi and selling their service to some other customers or some other resident inside the building. Once we're able to prove that, we can cut that customer off.
I thought y'all caught a couple of them like that.
Well, we think we're doing it. And I can, and I know they're doing it. I just can't prove they're doing it. I mean, I can't tell you, I can tell you, I can see what's happening. I can see a very strong Wi-Fi signal.
Yeah.
A couple of blocks down the street, and it's coming from that house. So it's pretty obvious what they're doing. And that is against the terms of use. You're basically stealing service.
But you can't knock on the neighbor's door and say, hey.
Yeah, if I did that, they'd say no. So we're figuring out a way to catch that customer, make it, and not work out for them financially to sell the service.
How far off is it before we can advertise this limit and start billing it?
We are transitioning to Z Coram. That was supposed to be on the seventh. They got pushed back. They had some provision issues with some phones. They can push that back for a week and a half, two weeks. We've got to get over to Z Coram first before we can start generating the bill. And that should happen, like I said, supposed to happen the seventh. It's got pushed out about two weeks. So that should be, what, fourteen days, twenty-first, twenty-second, and we'll be over there, and then we'll start putting that in place. I would say if that happens toward the end of the month, we get that done, I'd say March, I would see us coming in here with some kind of proposal if we all pass. Give you a month to be working with Z Coram and know what I'm doing. Yeah, that's, that's a lot of what's causing issues on the systems, is that overuse by a very small number of customers.
Brian, if those people are caught, is any kind of legal?
Besides cutting it off, no.
There's no kind of legal?
A couple of other things I've mentioned. We have completed the two-gig connection to our CMTS, which has really helped, caused other problems that we're having to research and figure out. And when you open up a stop pipe someplace, it goes down the road, it stops up that pipe there. So we're trying to fix that up. We've been working with Verbal Earth down on South Broad. We will start, hopefully, if the weather breaks, installing the street lighting or the facilities for the street lighting in the next two to four weeks. I'm supposed to be with them again end of this week. I'll talk to engineers tomorrow, I hope. But projects moving forward pretty good. And the mayor could probably tell you, as good as anybody. It's been, there have been a couple instances where it's been tough, but overall, it's been a good project. And we should start the Davis-Laces Street reconduct project, which y'all approved last year, end of this month. We will put it out on Facebook, we'll put out some signs, all that kind of stuff, trying to let the residents know what's going on. And that's all I have.
Where do we, where do we stand on the cable channel that we had to discontinue?
We have it off at this point, Mr., and I should have brought that up. Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Richardson. Peachtree is off at this point. We are still telling them what they're, what we think they're worth. Peachtree came in at forty-five cents, so they had college football games and about twenty-two Braves games. They thought they were worth two dollars when they lost all that. We told them, no, you're not. You're worth about twenty-two cents because you don't have the Braves games or the college games. Just to give you an example, one of the, I think it was thirty-six, they lost a lot of college games because the SCC network. They dropped their rate. They knew they weren't as valuable because they lost those games. They weren't paying for those games, so they, they dropped their rate. Peachtree TV is just not worth what they're asking. We've got them down to a dollar, which is a little over a hundred percent increase. We have got, I've got one call since it's been off. I don't think the call center's got more than two. My plans are that we need to leave it open. By the SCC rules, we need to do what's called negotiating good faith. And so we're held to some rules by the SCC. So we need to leave it open for a month, probably. And then I think we, we open it up to the public to give us some ideas of what channel they want in a certain price range. We'll pick a price range that's in that twenty-two to twenty-five cents, and we, you know, here are the five or six channels that we can carry for that price range. We all want. And that, that's my plan so far. And I'll, I'll come back to y'all next month, and we'll have a better idea. But they did not want to negotiate. They did not think we were cutting them off. But I did not see, and obviously, the value wasn't there because the customers aren't calling.
Any other questions, Brian?
Thank you. Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some numbers of interest for November were the property tax transactions. We had over eight hundred of those, and that collected us two hundred eighty-five thousand and four hundred eighty dollars. For December, that's going to be our big month. We're close to two hundred and dollars the last time I checked on that. The local option, the sales tax was a hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred thirty-five for November, and we just received December's payment, and it was at a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred ninety-three dollars. Moving on to the financial status report. As I mentioned earlier, the property tax money, most of that comes in December, so although November's number looks a little down there, it'll jump up considerably in December. All the departments, for the most part, have controlled their expenditures through November, so they stayed at or below that ninety-two percent mark. For the utilities, the overall revenue is right at that ninety-two percent mark again. And again, the departments were able to have kept their spending down up to this point. And for solid waste, even though the transfer revenue is down, they also have kept their expenses down, so they, they look pretty good at this point. And finally, some other items. Although this is entirely part of finance, I'd like to mention that Chris Bailey's been hired as our purchasing agent. He's already started working on some projects, such as updating some policies, which we're going to discuss here in the committee. And he's working on an asset tracking software. He also made the city a member of the National Joint Powers Alliance. This association is similar to the state contract purchasing, except it's on the national level. It just provides us another option when we're trying to find the best prices out there. And that's all I have.
You mentioned property taxes a couple of times there. I know it's still preliminary numbers, but how do you think we're going to kind of compare to budget on property taxes?
We won't hit the budget numbers. You know, some people just aren't going to, they're not going to pay, or they're going to wait until they have to pay. So it's probably going to be around the ninety-five percent mark, most likely, which is about average the last couple of years, ninety-two to ninety-five percent.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Department of Fire Department, in the month of November, had two hundred and fourteen phone calls, had a total of a hundred and forty-eight calls for service. Ninety-four of those calls were made assist calls, which is running, as it's been the trend all year and brought for the last four, five years. We conducted two hundred and thirty-three IOs of training in November, and we have good Thanksgiving done and everybody come to over there, and we enjoy that. Pending questions on fire.
Okay. Police Department.
Police Department had four thousand seven calls for service in the month of November, fifteen hundred and one calls from PD. Had three hundred and eighty court cases. A little bit, we had a issue come up in George Spring Court that involved totaling of probation, which means that basically they found it unconstitutional. But probation's a crossroad for Mr. Mina Courts, where the city or county, probation with extending probation allows somebody at the time to pay their fine. So that hit all municipal courts and I'm sure some county courts, meaning probably some state courts, depending on how they're doing their probation. Now, there was a legislative meeting today at GBI headquarters, and that's, that's something to probably be corrected in this legislative session and come back where, where it will be allowed again in the way of the law. But just when we went by court, I wanted to mention that. It's six IOs of training, Part One Crimes, eighty-nine, Part Two, one hundred and thirty-eight. You know, we're currently working a homicide with the GBI. We have a vehicle that's down at the sheriff's office now, and we're doing some crime scene type stuff on it, or forensic type stuff on the, on the vehicle. We have more than one person of interest in the case, and as soon as we get one we can, we'll put out more information on that. But I do expect an arrest, barely timely. We arrested one hundred and twenty-nine adults in November and twelve juveniles. We see the, the community event. One other thing, I think Mr. Richardson got a phone call, several folks in the county has got a phone call. Some of them have been saying it was a local SO and that you had a warrant, that you could pay for this warrant over the phone, they wouldn't come get you, which is not, not normal procedures for that. We've also had that same scam where it's been somebody say that they're from the IRS and, you know, if you will take care of this over the phone, we won't come tote you away and you'll count it, we won't lock him up and all that kind of stuff. But it is a scam. You know, if somebody needs you, if there's a warrant on you, somebody come let you know, or if they call, call down there and jail and verify it, or call nine-one-one and verify it for you. But it is just a scam. Pending any other questions? Modern technologies of being able to pay online and stuff creates a whole new criminal body or hands over the years. You know, basically, they get your information over the phone and you kind of got, unless you've got something with a credit card or a debit card that backs you up.
Any questions, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Richardson? Thank you, Chief. Yes, sir. Thank you. Solid waste.
Thank you, Mayor. Our November stats, they're trending downward towards the negative. Sorry. Didn't pick up as much in November as much as I thought we would because of the holiday due, because that's a good thing. On the report, the scrap tires missing, we did collect a hundred and sixty-six scrap tires. And we picked up eight, I mean, I'm sorry, we delivered eight dumpsters. We're in the process of swapping those dumpsters out. We did a lot of inquiries about leakage and that kind of thing, so we're trying to get those straightened out. Other than that, I appreciate the citizens cooperating. It did make the holiday collection a lot smoother and kept us on schedule.
Any questions? Glad to answer. Okay. Thank you, Danny. Streets and transportation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So like a few areas from the month of November. My admin side, we rented out the community building six times. Our fleet maintenance division completed seventy-three work orders. Grounds crew, when weather allowed, was out primarily picking up some trash and got about, excuse me, close to nine hundred pounds throughout the city. Street division in the month of November did repairs on five streets and patched six utility cuts. They spent the majority of their time working the leaf truck. We've had some down days and down weeks with it due to what it is. It is a very overused piece of machinery, and that requires some pretty steady maintenance at times, but they're out. Running now, we're roughly taking in about twenty-five tons of leaves per week. I know last, last time we talked about we got sixty tons that month. You know, there, I'm sure y'all see it, they are out. We're currently about probably three weeks behind on that route. But it's just, it's all we can do is go run sixty hours a week until we get them up. So please be patient with getting your leaves up. I know it's, I know it's bothered so many yards, but it's, that truck's doing all it can do to get up where it can get up. Moving on to our sign markings division. Between new signs and work orders and replacement, state did, completed twenty-six assignments in the month of November. Our building maintenance division completed forty-seven work orders for the month of November. And I'll be glad to answer any, any questions regarding streets and trans for the month.
Chairman, anything in the budget for this year to help with that leaf pickup?
Um, no. We go, we got, there, there is stuff in, that's worked into the budget for general maintenance and stuff that we replace on that machine every year as far as replacing the leaves. So that's a, that's a big ticket item we don't have a place. Several hundred thousand dollars for a new, new truck.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Chairman. Water, sewer, and gas, Mr. Miller Brothers.
Thank you, Mayor. As far as the water plant and the sewer plant goes, you'll notice water plant production drop, that's typical this time of year. We intend to see it go down in November, December, January into March. Also, the wastewater plant, you see a, you see a rise of it. That's typical due to, we get into the rainy season, start picking up a little more stormwater in our services. Outside of that, everything else is pretty, pretty typical. On the stormwater side, we did get the six hundred and forty feet put in over on plant acreage and woodland that probably finished. I don't know if you had a chance to ride by the wood. It turned out really good. And down at the bottom, just a few, few items I wanted to hit on. As far as duty goes, we're currently through the month of November, six hundred and one students. So we've already exceeded last year's number of five twenty-four. We've also continued our, repairing our system leaks on our, on the water distribution center, or water distribution system. We are seeing an increase, half or several months. So we're working on those as fast as we can. As far as the residential meter and the meter change out, the routes have been completed. Now that contractors went back and taking care of the ones that were too deep, that is going to require them to dig them up in order to change those out. They'll be set in cewers and larger boxes and stuff like that. So that's what's left, the residential route, and then they'll start with commercial, hopefully in the la, later, latter part of January, early February. I've already mentioned the stormwater completion of woodland. And then the pre-construction, as far as camera work, continuing planning on the two thousand thirteen, the CDBG started Monday. So they're on their town. Look forward to getting that great job finished up.
Okay, any questions? Any more? Questions for us? Thank you, Brad. All right, and we'll move into our committee information, starting with finance.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a couple of items on the agenda this evening. First one is update travel policy.
Thank you. It's been several years since this policy, one purchasing policy, has been updated. Stack worked on this, and, and a copy was sent to you last month to review. City Administrator Chance, he recommends adopting this, these changes. And if Ms. Prather has any additional comment?
No, I think, like you said, you've all had a chance to review and had a little bit of input, and everything's, I think, in order.
Any questions? Here and then, you have a motion?
Motion to approve the new travel policy.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion, second. All in favor, aye. Oppose. We recommend that full council next week. The second item is update the purchasing policy.
Like the travel policy, this has been several years since this has been updated. This will, this includes the National Joint Powers Alliance, that's included in this policy. City Administrator Chance, he recommends adopting these changes as well. And if Ms. Prather has any additional comment?
No, we just look forward to Mr. Bailey in this new position, being able to help with enforcement and that kind of thing, and the changes that, that are going to come about by being able to follow this, so.
Hope any questions? Here and then, call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion, have a second.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose. That passes, so passes it on to the full council approval. And that's all we have this evening, Mayor.
Airport.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one item. Ms. Prather.
Thank you. This was put on here kind of last minute. We've been dealing with the folks at GDOT and with our airport consultants and trying to move forward with the airport improvements that they've been working on for the last few months. We need to get an environmental assessment done, so it will call for doing a contract with George Wagner that'll, the fees will run around twenty thousand. We will be able to get reimbursed at ninety percent with GDOT federal funds. So we've just have not been able to get the contract from GDOT yet, but they're working on it. Hopefully, we'll have it by the end of the week, and I'll send it out to you as soon as I get it, and we'll have it on here for, for council approval next week, hopefully. And they'll move forward then with the fuel farm and some of the other things that we need to do.
And this is, like you said, an environmental for the whole airport?
It is.
Property, not just a little spot with a fuel farm.
There was one done many, many years ago, and GDOT will require, and I would assume the federal folks probably, that it be updated, and that's necessary to do not only that, but some of the other things that we've got to do, that obstruction removal, and that's it.
Any more questions? We need to put it for a vote now.
No, no.
As just discussion.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll vote on it next week. Hopefully, I'll have the contract, and if not, we may have to consider doing it after, after the attorneys have approved. But it's really just a basic engineering agreement to pay them that, so we'll put it on for full council next week.
All right.
That's all we have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Public Works.
We don't have anything, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Utilities.
We don't have anything, Stephen, Mayor.
All right, public safety.
No, we don't have anything, Mayor.
Okay. Economic development.
We do have some. Yeah, Ms. Cross had to come up, but I just want to tell you that she's coming up, that we are seeing good signs of economic development at this point. So commend city staff and others that have worked on this. You heard Patrick mention earlier, some businesses that needed a business license that have come up, and businesses getting ready to open. But I think we're, twenty fifteen's looking very promising, so maybe you could share some other data there.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, we ended up in the year with great support for downtown, as it is for economic development, and a lot of our empty spaces will begin to fill up. You'll see paper coming off windows and more things filling up as the year gets going. More contracts are signed on our smaller spaces, which is a good sign that bigger spaces will be next. So if we use that as kind of a test of what's coming, it's looking good, in our opinion, downtown. The, like Shane's opening soon, they've also contacted me, and they want to put pictures up in Monroe. So a lot of the new businesses are coming, they're very attractive to us as a city and want to represent that in their spaces. So I think that's positive. We'll continue to build that relationship with the new businesses. And some great news is that Monroe was selected to host the Smithsonian Traveling Exhibit, the Hometown Teens Exhibit. It's, Smithsonian does these exhibits to go around main street communities, and they send them to different states, and we applied, and Monroe was selected. So in two thousand sixteen, this exhibit from the Smithsonian will come to Monroe. This was a partnership with DEA and Monroe Cultural Heritage Museum. So when that space will be open in two thousand sixteen, they'll have this traveling show as a have this traveling show as a boost during the year to bring more people. So, I bought that for, um, state tourism. And then also, Monroe was selected by the National Main Street. So, that's the Main Street through the Historic Trust at the federal level to be a local tour for the National Main Street Conference. So, the end of March, March and April, everyone from all over the United States is coming to Atlanta for the National Main Street Conference. Last year was in Detroit, this year's in Atlanta. And one of their options is to come to Monroe and see what we've done in Monroe as a small town, trying to revitalize their historic fabric. So, this is a great opportunity. We're going to be looking at some of our local projects that have used the Downtown Development Authority, so we're looking at antiques, and, um, hundreds of people, actually, it might be thousands, will be coming. The registrations are already coming in to Atlanta, and a handful of those, fifty maximum, will be coming soon. So, it's a great opportunity for us to just get some positive things about our great development. So, we're excited, um, and we think that's a good sign, things to kind of do.
And, Miss Cross, realizing there are a few people on this crew that like sports. You might point out that Smithsonian exhibit is a sports, is...
It is. It's called Hometown Teens. So, it's about how sports affect the local community. Um, we have a lot of ideas that we'd like to pull together, a lot of things we want to celebrate about the sports history in Monroe. Um, so, we'll be working on that to really make it something special in the region of, going with the sports.
Is that all we have?
Yes, I'm sorry, that's all.
All right, we'll move into the items. Uh, discussion coming to the next meeting. We have a beer and wine, pack of sales, chestnut cover, approval of two thousand fifteen election qualifying fees. It does change?
No, that's, uh, according to state law, so.
Right, okay. A resolution for the Open Records Officer.
And that's state law as well, so it's just, you just have to kind of ratify it every year, so.
Resolution for the City of Ethics, recertification.
And that has to be done. I think it's every five years, um, and I sent out something. You know, I had, nobody had any questions of that, so.
Okay, we have, uh, three appointments for Downtown Development Authority.
Two or three appointments, um, Wes Peters and George Baker III, and, um, then, um, one will be a newer, new appointment. And, um, did those, um, I'm trying to think if they sent those out?
Yeah.
Yeah, they did? Okay. So, that's been sent out, uh, the bios, and I hope that met with your, your office approval, is what we did with that, so.
All right, uh, we have two items requiring action tonight. Uh, the first one is an election of Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate, uh, Wayne Adcock as Vice Mayor.
Motion for Wayne Adcock?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Martin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. And item number two is the appointment for the council representative to the Downtown Development Authority, and I think that's my appointment. Y'all just need to okay it. I'd like to keep Larry Bradley on, uh, but I need a motion for that.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Dick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Prather. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. And with no other business, we need a motion to adjourn.
Some.
Motion by Mr. Scott.
Second.
She has no objection.
Making adjournments. Thank y'all for voting. Stay warm this week.
We, we, we timed it with the right guy. I know, okay, I thought I was about to pass on.